Meeting of the City of Ched-. City of Cheditch Hill City Council for March seventh, twenty twenty-three to order. Let the record reflect that all council members are present for tonight's meeting. Like to remind anyone who wants to make a public comment tonight to fill out one of the yellow comment cards you see at the desk up front. Please hand those to the city attorney when you have that. If you have a cell phone, please make sure you've got the ringer turned off. And if you would, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item tonight is the approval of the meeting agenda. As we discussed in the work session, because they're still working on a couple of things with membership, we're going to move the planning commission and historic commission. Resolutions to next month. Are there any other changes or additions? All right. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to approve the amended meeting agenda? I can motion to.
Prove the new amended meeting agenda.
A second.
With a motion in a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting stand, meeting agenda stands approved. Next up is the approval of the minutes from the meeting of February seventh. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes, please?
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion, anything anybody needs changed? If not, all those in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Does oppose, nay? That stands approved. We've got no presentations or proclamations today. So the next item on the agenda is public comment. Which is time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council, provide their input and opinions on any matter not scheduled for its own public hearing during tonight's meeting. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone directly to the council for stating your name and address for the record. You're allowed three minutes for your personal remarks. Are there any public comments?
There are, Mr. Mayor, first Renee Prince.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Renee Prince and I live at one three zero one five Hamilton Road. I wanted to speak tonight towards a serious concern I have. At last month's council meeting, I'd heard the comments about the need proper concerning citizens being afraid to speak up. For fear of not being granted their permits. I felt intimidated at times about speaking up about. At our city council, I've even touched it about the fear on Chat Hill's happening, the rights and rights. Based with the patient which the mayor responded that this isn't, this is unacceptable, along with the city manager saying he could start this on May 11th. I am part of Chat Hill's alliance. For volunteer citizens and I want to do my part to support our citizens and their concerns. I'm a curious person by nature and I've often heard our mayor encourage citizens to come and ask the questions you want answers to. So I took it upon myself to reach out and meet with six out of the seven individuals that was presented during a meeting that took place when Mr. Rockovitz told a citizen that he would not allow another permit on his property again. During my meeting with Mr. Rockovitz, I told him that I felt that he did not handle the situation in a professional manner. My conclusion at this time is that the city council needs to further investigate Mr. Rockovitz and make sure that he is not abusing his right of power over our citizens. I'm requesting that this council add, council ask the hard questions and get to the bottom of this so citizens can remain active in our communities. And I have a pack here that has all my documents to back up my research.
Thank you.
Next, Denine Crawford.
Testing, testing.
Yeah, you just have to get a little closer to it.
Yeah.
Denine Crawford, five five seven five Cockermill Road. As the president of the Chat Hill Citizens Alliance, I am coming to you again tonight to address a couple of concerns the committee has received. First, we would like to thank Mr. Rockovitz for implementing the citizen's suggestion of sending out an email from the community awareness bulletin with the city council agenda for this month. I know several citizens have reached out and said that they really appreciated that form of communication. We would also like to thank Ms. Lori Searle for spreading the word about info@chatheels.com. Being the email for the Chat Hill Citizens Alliance Committee and her District Three newsletter. Thank you, Lori. We appreciate that. Um. As Ms. Prince stated, I was one of the witnesses that was in the meeting when I heard the city manager tell a citizen that he would never allow another permit on his property. And this is concerning to me as well, because I've had several citizens. Say that they were afraid to speak up because they were afraid that they would not get building permits or permits on their property. I'm hoping that this type of discrimination is not being allowed in our city and should be addressed. Another concern is paving of Hutcheson Ferry Road. Mr. Alton Powell granted permission to read his email to the council. Thank you for including me in this report. I hope that our city grows and thrives. As a longtime resident and as a member of the original organizing committee and as an original candidate for the first city council. I share a deep bond with Chat Hills. I wish to voice my opinion on the disparity between paving new roads and Serenby and the neglect in paving a main road, Hutcheson Ferry Road. A main artery in our city. Hutcheson Ferry Road has been patched and repatched so much, it is very rough. That portion from Good's to Palmetto is terrible. It is high time the council recognized this problem and put this road on the repaved list. Do something that will help everyone instead of catering to new construction in Serenby. Repave Hutcheson Ferry Road to everyone's benefit who uses it daily. Sincerely, Alton Powell. Also, another citizen reached out can say, um, requesting or. Actually wanting to suggest that we should reconsider placing neighborhood watch signs throughout our city. Especially in our main thoroughfare streets like Hutcheson Ferry Road, Cockermill Road, Howard. You have thirty seconds. Thank you. Um, that way we can hopefully deter any kind of crime at this time. Another citizen has concerned expert, uh, concern over the eighteen wheeler that is parked. Our parking in the right of way on Cockermill Road at Brazel Road. This truck is on a curve and parked in front of or next to a fire hydrant. That is a safety concern.
Yeah, that's bad. I've seen that.
You've seen that one, yeah. Um, and.
That's time.
Thank you for your time.
Next, Robert Richardson.
Robert Richardson, nine four two five Hutcheson Ferry Road. I would have spoken at the last city council meeting, but my attorney advised me not to speak at that time. It's within my right, my civil rights to stand here before this council and express my thoughts and opinions without being or feeling threatened by city officials. On January twenty-second, I was threatened on social media by our city manager with a fine for mud being on the road. On January twenty-fourth, I was asked to attend a meeting at city hall on TDRs with two Chat Hill councilmen, two other Chat Hill citizens and Mike Morton. The city manager came in for the last five minutes of the meeting and I asked him if I could talk to him. I told him I did not appreciate being called out on social media and threatened with a fine. At that point, the city manager aggressively jumped up from his chair, turned red and wild eyed and began yelling at me. One of the things he yelled at with me was, you might be able to bully our mayor around, but you're not going to bully me. My count, both councilman Smith and Bettis jumped up thinking a fight might occur. I remained seated and calm and never raised my voice. The city manager yelled three times that I would never get another permit in the city and he would make sure of that. Before the, before this day, I had never met or spoken a word to the city manager, nor had I had any conversations with the mayor outside this room. This attack was unprovoked and most, the most unprofessional thing I have ever witnessed from a city official. I feel I was singled out for speaking in favor of landowner rights at the council meetings. I demand a public apology from the city manager and the city and ask the city council to take appropriate actions. Thank you.
Next, David McElree.
I'm David McElree. I live at one of River Town Road. Anyway, um, I've spoken to the last, I don't know, two or three meetings and I want to apologize to everybody if I say anything that you and this thing and I've got to say today. Last two meetings I attended, I witnessed the most blatant form of bullying I think I've ever seen in my life in front of a group of people. Mr. Reed has his three voters that says yes to everything he does. Almost looks like, uh, an old movie thing called The Stepper Wife. So let's hope, yes, I want to hit it past. Nobody talks to anybody out here in the audience about whether they think this is right or. I haven't never seen any of y'all pick up one of those forms to see how we vote or how we feel. And that's just what's known as, you know, not communicating with the people. Seems like all we want down here is villages, studios, fully developed property throughout Cheditch Hill country. That's what I've always known. To be called as Cheditch Hill country, not a city. Anything that doesn't seem to have or interfere with Serenby, alright, pass it, you know, pass it away. Used to, when it first started down here, the school that was supposed to be in Serenby ended up on River Down Road that impeded traffic every day. So you had to. Go on the right side or left side of the road, come head on with the people coming over the hill with no policing whatsoever. And I don't think there's a police up there now at all, ever. And I mean, it's just getting ridiculous the way things are just run down here like we're a, a society full of dictatorship. Anyway, uh, not to mention the roads, getting on the wrong side of the road with that, the bicycles. This is another thing. People have been thinking about the bicycles for years. I even asked at a meeting, can we have some signs? No, there's no money for the signs. But it's funny that we have a hun- over a hundred thousand dollars that we can put in, uh, signs pointing to Bukart Farms, uh. La Hacienda, Hamilton Park, Stool Brick Works, um, Smith Grocery, which I consider an icon because I've been up here all my life. It is sad on any of these signs that I've looked at, there's not one mention of Friendship Baptist Church, Providence Baptist Church. Uh, Rico Methodist Church or any of these people y'all has to help serve here. I don't understand that. And I don't see, uh, Bukart Farms or La Hacienda or anything.
Thirty seconds.
Any of our type of currency, but I do see in God we trust on, um, our, our currency that we have right now. And, and I'd like to know if I'm right about that. Maybe most of the councils are agnostic or atheist. I don't know, don't care. But, you know, our rights are being given away left and right. And I just want to voice all this because, you know, we had a three hundred thousand kid party here. Three years in a row that destroyed the sides of our roads, trashed everything at the end of the park, half naked. And I mean, you know, I just don't understand all this. Y'all don't seem to ever have any good ideas or think about anything that might affect the people of this community. I just don't get it. But I mean, you know, you stay, you're letting the movie people block our roads, send us around everywhere, fifteen miles out of the way.
Mr. McElree, the time's up.
God forbid.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna leave you with this, if you don't mind. You know, uh, this is just a little word of wisdom.
If, if you want to hand it to me, I'll be happy to give it to council, but we have to have standards, sorry. Next, Steve Nigren.
Steve Nigren, ninety seventy Selmore Lane. Uh, I just want to take a moment to thank the council for supporting, uh, our department in the manner that they have. For Chief Brett and his entire team, because we, we had an event on thirty-three Swan Ridge two weeks ago. And the professionalism, you can see the training and, uh, I'm not sure that we are always aware of the professionalism and what happens. For a small city, uh, for what we saw, that was really pretty impressive and people from other fire departments coming at us. So, Chief, thank you. Thank you, city council.
That's the last one, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Next up, our staff reports, and we'll start with the financial update from the city manager.
Hey, good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, citizens. Uh, real quick, before I start, I wanted to make a just couple announcements that in the back of the room, you'll see, uh, Michael Upshaw and his partner James from Above the Cloud Media. They're here tonight because we struggled a little bit with our new sound system. So here to make sure everything works okay. They've been doing some troubleshooting, so I just want to let you know that they're here. Make sure this goes smoothly for us, for those that are here as well as those that are online. And another thing that came in the mail, I thought it'd be cool to share with you guys from, uh, the council member at large Brett Riker with. Hey, boom. He wrote a, a note to the mayor and council, says, uh, just a note of thanks to you and all your Chat Hill staff and officials for the warm welcome dinner. And, uh, presentation last week, uh, I've shared your, uh, barn trail info with those planning our art trail. Best wishes. So he came to the South Fulton Association meeting. He's sent a little letter. So I thought I'd share that with you real quick tonight because I'm, you know, I'm here for the finance, but not anything else. So you do have an updated version of the financial report for the month of, uh, February. It went through February twenty-seventh. I know there's twenty-eight days in the month, but we went through twenty-seven where we got the data. This is an updated version because you made some corrections to it from then to now, or not corrections, just some updates. But you'll see that we are sixty-six percent through the fiscal year and we are, we, we collected. You know, all our tax revenue and other revenues down there, you'll see that we've got the hundred percent of our, uh, insurance premium tax and L-MIG and. Our, our ARPA money, which is the American Recovery Act and those kinds of things, as well as. The hotel motel tax and T-SPOS and those are our revenues. So we're at about total of ten million in collections. And expenditures are about five million and about close to six million in expenditures now because all our departments. So. We are looking good. We're on track. We're thirty-six percent of revenues compared to expenditures. And again, we're looking good. We're working on the budget right now. Basically projecting some revenues. I know it's kind of early, but it is March and we're working on changing the times up here next, this coming weekend. Don't forget to do that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the financials or anything else.
What's the lost money coming in at each month now?
Lost money, I might, heard my finance director give me exact number, but it's usually around forty thousand dollars, forty to fifty thousand dollars for, for loss. Right? Is that about right? Was it T-SPOS? Interchangeable. That's T-SPOS.
They take spots, yeah, because we've got budgeted seven fifty.
Yeah, we will, we'll hit seven fifty. I don't know the exact amount. I can get that exact number in a month. Yeah.
Okay.
Doing a quick math, yes, sir. So those are, those are sales taxes that have happened throughout the county that we could benefit from.
It's going to big down.
Good, sir. One of the things that we talked about at the work session for the folks who weren't here for that was some budgetary work that we're doing and. Alton will be happy to know that, uh, one of the things that is on the paving list for this year is such as Ferry, so. Among a bunch of other roads actually, but. Uh, that is good news because we've done such a good job of managing the funds. Thanks, Robbie. Next up is Fire Department report from Chief Brett.
Mayor, Council, Citizens, thank you for opportunity to report to you. Our month of February was, uh, probably. Most busiest month I think I have had in going on ten years now as Fire Chief. The incident that occurred, uh, in, uh, Serenby at thirty-three Swan Ridge is, is an open investigation. You would expect that to be the case. We have, um, actually released the site. Back to the owner and or his agents, their agents, meaning insurance. So our physical investigation of the site is complete. But we continue to, uh, pull together other bits of information, uh, from those who were present, those who occupied the home. So, uh, we hope to bring that to a close relatively soon. I thought it would be helpful to just try to provoke your thinking a little bit and explain what. We are dealing with in a fire investigation. So the front side of my report there says, this is, this is what we, we deal with. And how we have to see it. And this, but what I've said here, there's ten times more of that. But nevertheless, wanted to give you some thinking in that regard. I want to, um, be sure to identify the fact that, um. On that particular incident, five departments were present. Representing, uh, with twenty-four firefighters and a number of other support groups, including help, Grady Healthcare, uh, Air Life. One patient was flown. So there were, um, a number of people there and, um, the fact is, it wouldn't have gone as well as it did if we didn't have that kind of, uh, support. So I have to offer kudos to, um, Chief Argo and his group that arrived, uh, at the same time we did and provided the ladder truck. And, uh, but then City of South Fulton and Fairbairn were equally, uh, engaged with their personnel and their own apparatus that were a part of a water shuttle operation to supplement our water volume there. And then, of course, then Koby that came in as well to be a part of that. So just. Went well in spite of the fact that it was a very bad incident. So. On a similar note, lately, um, we've been, um, really focused on, um. Quality care, I guess is the way to say. Spent a lot of time with our people talking about their role in providing care here. In whatever way it may be. And, um, a particular person, um, mentioned that the other day and I'm going to call my two medics now. Uh, Todd Clark and Raphael White, um, were. Called to the scene, uh, and provided aid and in a situation that, you know, was, was difficult for the individual. And, and here's the real flaw. When those moments happen, it is the most important moment, right? When that bad thing happens, it's, it's, it's what you're focused on. And it's, it takes a little bit sometimes to remember to, to, to have good bedside manner, if I can use that term. And to get the job done thoroughly and see things through for the individual or individual. And those guys had it right. And it's my hope that everybody gets it right all the time. We can't be that perfect, but we're working it. As far as our report numbers, they're listed at the top of the report. I'll be happy to answer any. Questions or offer more information if you need it.
Chief Brett, I'm going to ask you the same question I asked you in the work session. What other equipment do you need to handle these type things?
Councilman Bettis, I reflected on that question and wondered, did I give the right answer?
Absolutely.
I, um, I, I want to alter that response by, by saying, yes, we've, we need a ladder truck.
Right.
But I need, um. I can't do this without.
Cities growing.
It's difficult to do that. I don't, I don't mean to add more people necessarily at this time. I just need to be able to support them, uh, in every way I can. That includes financially so that I can. Can hold on.
You know, between you and Jim, as we go into this future, whatever it may be. You guys are the ones that have to have vision. You know, for your departments. And, uh. It's changing rapidly and, uh, I appreciate you, man.
Thank you.
You know, I have said it a couple of times. I'm going to say it again. I was there that morning, uh, watching the operations that were going on and. One of the reasons that went so smoothly is because of the amazing amount of training that you've done. Uh, we had, uh. Responses from agencies all around us because Greg has worked with those guys to make sure that we have automatic aid with them. So that they roll the truck the second that the alarm goes off rather than having to wait for a call. Greg has had those same companies in here, uh, doing shuttle training. So they were running shuttles that day to get extra water on the fire. Uh, beyond what they could get out of a hydrant even. And, uh, that training went off. It was amazing to watch. And that's because of the level to which they've trained. We, I say this often, we swing above our weight here and you are a fantastic example of that. So. Thanks again, Greg. Uh, next up is Police Department report. Jim?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, before you have, you have my monthly reports, a few things I want to highlight and then I have a few comments. The dispatch calls continue to increase, uh, two hundred and eighteen percent above the same month from last year. Four hundred and six calls. And that doesn't count the officer initiated calls. We recall, the officer initiated calls are the ones where the officers actually observe something and take action without being dispatched to those calls. Uh, so those numbers are critical as well. You know, it's a matter of our patrolling and the officers being present, you know, to see these things. So we averaged six, six calls an hour. You know, for an area like Atlanta, that's, that's, yeah, that, that would be low call volume for us. And with our staffing, our guys are pretty busy. And they stay busy. A lot of those calls are, require multiple officers, uh, when there's arrest involved, uh, if there's, you know, violent crime. You know, they're serving a warrant, a domestic dispute. And again, that requires manpower. I am down, I am fully staffed, but I'm down one officer. He is out on, uh, short-term disability. And so with a department our size, one, one person missing is a big deal. But we're paying overtime and filling in those shifts with the administrative personnel as well. The, in reference to the truck on the right of way, if it's a truck I'm being of, that's not in our city.
You're right.
There's nothing I can do about.
I sense.
I've seen, I, if I, it's the one I'm thinking of on Cockermill, I see it too when I. Bicycle right there. Uh, I've seen it as well. I know exactly where it is, uh, but it is not in our city. So there, there's nothing I can do as far as enforcement for that vehicle. Uh, the other thing, last thing I want to address is Saturday, there was a firearm located, uh, in addition to Hutcheson Ferry. Again, on Facebook, on social media, they got it wrong. It's not a newsie. It's not a fully automatic weapon.
It's a slingshot, no.
Well, no, it's a pistol. Uh, there was one round. In a magazine, it was not fully loaded. It was so rusty. And now I would be afraid to try to find, uh, you, uh, but we, we were called, oh, I'm assuming shortly after it was discovered and we took possession of it on Saturday. So for the people asking if they can buy it or if they can have it or they can shoot it, um, it's here in my evidence from the answer's no.
Chief, can I ask you where that was it found exactly?
Yes, sir. It, it was near the, the incident, uh, Hutcheson Ferry drop where I was about to access it down. We suspect that it, it could have been one of, we found one of the two weapons that were described by the victim. We suspect that, I can't prove for sure that that is actually the other firearm, but it's been outside for a while, for a while.
Sure. Quite a bit of rain too, yeah.
Yes, sir. It was, it was bad. Sure. So I just wanted, you know, reassure the community, you know, that it's not so out there that we were called, the, the person that found it did the right thing. They called us almost. You know, immediately we took possession of it. It is in our evidence room. It's not stolen. I have no idea who the owner is, uh, you know, because there is no gun registry, uh, but I can't say it has not been reported stolen.
So will this have any type of bearing on any type of investigation that's happening with the incident that you've referred to?
No, sir. I can't connect it to it.
Sure.
We are going to notify the DA's office, you know, that, that it was found. And so we will hold on to it. If the owner of it comes forward. Uh, I would have to release it back to them if they can prove that they owned it. Otherwise, it'll be destroyed. After the, the appropriate or the legal amount of time that we could hold.
And about how long will that be?
Well, it depends when the DA's office is done with it. Uh, basically, they don't want it for evidentiary value. I believe it's six months, but we have to hang on to it. We have to advertise it. And then the owner would have to come forward with a receipt or some other proof, uh, that that was their weapon. Uh, and so that's why I'm not being vague about what it is. It's a pistol. It's a pistol. It's not a newsie. It's not a full automatic firearm. So I, I assure that. I'm just trying to protect.
Sure.
The, the weapons of the owners.
Sure. Absolutely understood. Understood, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are you down one guy right now?
Yes, sir. Yeah, he had surgery last week.
Because last month you said you you were good, so I guess you're you're feeling it with part-time. So as far as needing added police officers, we don't need those, correct?
No, sir, I do.
You do.
Yes.
Because I was talking about that last and you were making the point that you you can cover everything. Everything's good. So I'm confused. If you go back and listen to last month's comments, what I said while you were standing right there, that's that's what you'll hear.
I'm fully staffed. And at that time, you know, I had all my positions covered.
So I'll ask my question one more time. Do you do you need more police officers?
Yes, sir.
Right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. All right, next up is the Public Works Report from Darrell Onelet.
Good evening. Look a smile somehow. Hard to do. All right, quick update. Let's see, you see, you notice the rideaway crews cutting side armor throughout the city. We're going to try to make a whole path for the summer comes it. But even if we don't, we're still going to try to continue going. That one crew at least make one pass of the, when the grass comes up on the right away. So we're going to try to stay on top of that before it gets full, full, full vegetation in there. Also, crews, since we have a good dry weather, scraping gravel roads, getting them maintained. If you notice on Phillips Road, does some extra work. Film crews donate some money with to the city to increase travel and better build the road as we was out there working. So that's that's a plus for us. You know, I know a lot of people don't understand, there's a lot that we put into time for film, for filming, for events and stuff. We have several meetings and we have standards that we uphold these film industry and events when they come in our city. Make sure we, we, we as directors know exactly what you expect. We know what the citizens expect from us. And I feel the same way because I've said in the meetings, I love this city as much as I love my own home. And this is my home. I've been here many years and I hold these people to the standard. I hope if you was in every meeting with me when we were meeting with these people, you see that I hold them to a high standard because I know what you expect. And most of the time they deliver, and if they don't, we try to work with them. And sometimes it's hard, you know, they promise you the world and they're gone. We have to make up for it. So we try to try to get it to beginning as best as possible. So ease your mind knowing that we're doing everything in our power to make sure y'all get what you expect from us and and as directors. Also, we got ball season coming up this month. I'm so excited. Love, I love ball, say, love baseball. Love to see the kids out there enjoying that beautiful ballpark that we have out there. If you noticed, we've spent some time this month. There's a lot of social media about the trees and going on that we know about them. Got so much on our list to do. We know that is a priority, but it's 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 taken care of before season like as usual. The fields have been working on the infield, being maintained, getting ready for ball season. So we'll definitely be ready for ball season as we are every year, and I look forward to that. And I thank thankful for there's people in this audience right now that does a lot of that for us. A lot of volunteer on that ball. Lila Lynn. Kenny does a lot of work with us. He works well. I'm grateful for the relationship I have with these two people and the parks, parks chair lady, Ms. Dana. This is, we work well together. So a lot goes on, like you say, we, I think we definitely hit above.
Hey, how are you?
Thank you, love you too. Be home in about an hour or two.
It does seem like it's all working today, though, so there's.
And 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 on a, that's pretty much all I got. I just want to add one more thing. Just want y'all to know that y'all, as mayor and council and residents, that I give a hundred percent everything I do here. It matters to me. And and it's when you get people that say some things about you and it does hurt, but you try. You're not going to please everybody, but we do our best, and I know I do. And I'm I'm grateful for the team that we have here. And if there's anything I can do to better myself, I definitely will do it in any way I can. If y'all have any questions for me, I'd be more than glad to ask, answer them.
Yeah, Darrell.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell me what is the, I guess, the responsibility of the little park ranger guy that we hired?
Yes, sir. He's out there for communication, for someone to ask questions. He he he's new, so what he's young, so what he's done, he tries to walk trails, familiarize familiarize himself with what trails are where and help with parking and communicate with the police department about parking. And pretty much he's just someone out there to have a face out there to speak to. He does pick up trash from time to time. He checks on the bathroom if there's any incidents or whatever. He contacts me if papers out, the rest are.
He answers to you?
Yes, sir, he does now.
Okay, well, just just so you know.
Yes, sir.
Fielding a couple of phone calls.
Okay.
From people. Still having a huge problem with dogs off leash over there.
Okay.
Still having a huge problem with, and and listen, I'm just throwing it out there.
Yes, sir.
The pictures that I received from citizens were somebody doing their homework, sitting at a picnic table. So I don't pay people to do their homework.
Right.
Citizens' tax dollars shouldn't.
Sure.
And I realize you can't monitor somebody every minute.
Right.
Two of them actually left the park early due to the amount of marijuana and hearing beer bottles bust as they got back to the back of the park. My concern is, is, you know, the park is so busy now.
Yes.
And we know that is is one person or do we need? See, my train of thought is different. My train of thought is to have an active officer back there, what we pay.
Yes, sir.
To have somebody who actually is patrolling, who actually does have the ability to cite you or send you out of the park.
Yes, sir.
Because what I'm seeing right now is I'm just getting getting complaint after complaint after complaint. And the reason why a lot of people call me is because, and you know this whether you like me or not, the bottom line is I'm going to give you the truth as I know it. And I can't answer that.
Right.
I can't, I can't, I don't know. Should I go up to the little guy and say, listen, could you tell these people to quit smoking their pot?
I got.
That would be nice.
I agree.
You know, because we have, we have a playground up there that is missing a lot of mulch, just a mud hole. And I mentioned that last time. Hopefully, that's that's getting fixed.
Yeah, we got a long list.
And the citizens need to understand, this man is grossly overworked. That park, it can consume three people every day of the week, okay? So I'm not giving this man a hard time. I'm just simply saying that because of the traffic in that park, we need to come up with another solution than a teenager sitting in a chair who has no authority.
Right.
Who is a clock rider. Thank you.
Yeah, and that was the whole object of have someone there for to be able to answer questions and be for Matt, where to go here, where to go there, you know, not to be a law enforcement. And that's because we couldn't, I don't think we could.
Well, I think at this point, when you have your bridges getting your feet, you have people doing illegal drugs. I think maybe it's time for law enforcement. Maybe that's just me.
If you ever.
But I do know one thing. These dogs, this has become a problem. I saw a grown man run from a dog. It's only a matter of time, you know, and 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 we just need somebody there.
Yep.
I mean, if we have to pay him a little bit more to actually, you know, remind people of the rules, what's acceptable, what's not. And that's it's getting out of control.
And I have noticed some things to your point. When you're out there in the trail, you know, a couple of miles in the trail, you know, and that happens, you know. I agree completely with what you're saying. It's hard to to be out there and somebody needs to be able to tell somebody to do something about it because we can't be all over the park. But you're right.
And see, that's my point. If you look at this little budget sheet here, it's totally sort of crazy when we started charging for parking. I think that definitely justifies hiring somebody with some real authority because your job is public works. Your job isn't babysitter. And that's really all I got to say about that.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Darrell. Next up is Community Development Report from Mike Morton.
Mayor Council, again, you have the numbers in front of you. You can see that we didn't have any new homes or did this last month. We've been down volume-wise for for a little while as as we have been nationally. Total number of COs issued is the same as a year ago, but generally across the board, we're we're down. Just a little, a couple of little updates. As I mentioned in the work session, the studio application we have in hand, it is up right now for regional review. The developments of regional impact review, which we use traffic. And we can't hold any public hearings until that review is done and reported out, which will probably be a couple of months. I also know that the applicant was hoping to hold a, planning to hold a public information, public engagement meeting of some sort, probably happened here. That's something they'll be organizing, but everyone will have an opportunity to learn about it there. And then, of course, we'll have our regular round of round of of public hearings on that. Also, working on doing some planning for the Rico Crossroads, as has been in our top plan since the very beginning. And we'll be scheduling a public meeting related to that. That will be us scheduling a public meeting to present the work that's been done and 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 talk about the path forward there. Also, wanted to address one, one of the many things that came up in in comment, just because it is related to to my department, I think everyone probably knows, but and I know this is secondhand comment, somebody wasn't here. But the city doesn't do any paving in Saranbe. We are involved. We charge them money for the privilege of being inspected by us. So we do that, we play that role. We don't pave there. And anyone, I think, can expect anywhere you see something new being paved, it's not the city. The city is repaving roads, repairing roads that it has. But anything new happening in your development is being paid for by the developer. Finally, Planning Commission meeting scheduled for this nine days from now, a week from Thursday, the sixteenth. But right now, we don't have anything for the agenda, so that that may be, that's all I have.
Mike, there was an article that came out in the Atlanta Business Chronicle, said that the Trilla Studios, I mean, I'm sorry, this new project, is it Rosebud now? Has it changed its name to Project Rosebud? Then it's going to be four times the size of Trilla.
I guess, so I don't think I know the size of Trilla. Yes, it's when he, the applicant had planned it for another location entirely. He was talking about it being the biggest studio, I think, anywhere.
In the country.
So he had the plan.
Okay, so.
Three million total square feet are what's included, not all studios based, but.
So the process they're going through right now, can you tell us from, I guess, your previous experience, what what's likely to come out of that? You're going to have to widen roads, you're going to have to do what?
I don't know about widening roads, so they're on State Road. And that's part of the review they're going through now. They did a traffic study and it's being reviewed by the Atlanta Regional Commission and Georgia DOT and Greta, Georgia Regional Transportation Authority. We'll see what their, well, they'll have requirements, recommendations, requirements coming out of that.
So for a project of this size, you have no idea what may come out of this, maybe.
So the numbers that they've reported for the DRI forums are not huge traffic numbers. So I would not expect to have to do widening based on the numbers I've seen. But again, we'll get, we'll get review by people who are more traffic experts than I am. I think probably intersection improvements, deceleration lanes, things like that. I'm not expecting road widening, but but we'll we'll see what they, what Greta has to say about that. But the numbers, the numbers that they gave us to put on the DRI form, maybe submitted with the state were surprisingly low as far as peak hour trips.
Okay, thank you.
Right, and Mike, I mean, and I'm asking probably just an innocuous question here. I mean, ignorant question maybe, but we've got a lot of dirt roads that are going to be buttoned up against that if this thing happens. So part of this traffic study will include traffic patterns, of course, right?
Right.
So all this is going to come out, okay?
Yeah, the traffic study defines a traffic network extending a different, they assign different percentages of the traffic to the different, different routes coming in and out in different ways.
Sure. Yeah, sure, absolutely. I mean, we've got like Jones Ferry.
Right, that's right. So the other property. That's right, the property does lie on both sides of Jones Ferry, west of Highway seventy. And but their entrances are all off of the State Road, except for they're showing some small amount of, we'll call it residential. It is residential under our, under our zoning, but it doesn't act like regular residential. A couple of dozen houses, probably. The intent as presented by the applicant is that those would be for stars who are in, working in the studio. So longer term than lodging, right, more than thirty days at a time, but not permanent residents. So probably a couple dozen that would load off of Jones Ferry Road. So there might be some small amount of traffic on Jones Ferry Road, but it's all studio related because those are probably people who aren't going to be going after the community a lot.
Oh, we allowed Mike to charge a separate impact fee? Can we make an ordinance for a development of that size to collect an impact fee for that for our city?
The state regulates how cities are allowed to do impact fees and.
They regulate how you spend them, correct?
Right, you have to do, there are there are only certain categories of expenses you can include.
Correct.
Impact fees for, you have to create a capital improvement plan and then assign a certain percentage of that plan to the increase caused by the new development. That would take us some time to put together. I don't think that we can get that done for this project according to.
But part of what comes out of the DRI programs, often a set of requirements that the developer will have to fulfill before they can do their project, like road improvements and things like that.
Well, the reason I say that, because, you know, I talked to a few people, the capital and stuff, and there's a lot of cities that are like us. We know how the impact fees can be spent. Where some of the conversation may be moving to where, you know, half of the state of Georgia, why not change some of those rules? So we're not leaning on the state when we can collect our own money and repair our own roads. So the reason I bring that up is because I would anticipate with the amount of cities that are little tax revenue, little amount of people, that if something like that does change in five or six years, that could be quite a mistake. Because when you look at, like, the roads were paved and when you look at the, the, we call lane miles. Then we figured it out, we're right at twenty lane miles we're doing. Okay, this this time around. So we've got fifty-six miles of road here, right? Is that right?
A paper.
Paper, it's about seventy, I believe. Seventy-two, so times four, that's one forty-four. So if we're at twenty, what's that give us? That's about one eighth of our our roads, we're going to be able to do in two, two years with two point five million. Correct, so my thing is if we can add another kitty on the side, why wouldn't we? Who cares what Rosebud likes it or not? These are our roads, these are our people. And last I checked, we make those rules. So my question is, is that possible?
Again, according to my understanding of state law, the impact fees.
Is it possible to collect money? That is my question, regardless of what the rules on how you spend them.
You know, it's it's fun to have this conversation here in the council meeting. This is really a work.
A work session. We've had the discussion too.
Because, yes, it is possible to collect impact fees. There's. We collect one right now by putting seventy percent of our land aside, right? Nobody gets to develop all of their land, that's one. And impact fees generally, in the way that they're written in the law right now, have to be spent on impacts directly for the thing. You can't spend them generally. And the city attorney can walk us through all that at the next work session. So let's plan on that. That's on Eric. That's fine, okay.
And you know, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to make this comment. I believe this is a great place to have this conversation. Really, is it? We've got a lot of people here. Yeah, I understand. You know, work session, I understand the philosophy of of what's happening here. I'm a, I'm a new councilman, three years into into this, but a lot of this is about transparency. These people want to hear these questions asked.
And I would like to add that the work sessions are open to the public as well.
Exactly, but a lot of them can't come here during that work session.
And the benefit of discussing these at the work session is it's not a one-way conversation. It's a team conversation, so we don't have to sit there for twenty minutes and listen to one person speak. There can be interaction. We can have people from the Planning Commission, other people with the TDR, you know, they're available to answer these questions. And we have talked about in, anyway.
Excuse me, Lori. All right, we can do that here, though, can't we? Has anybody been given a gag order for any?
Of course not, you can talk all you want.
Of course not.
And I'd be happy to prepare more information on on impact.
That was my only question. Can we collect those fees in case it changes down the road? Because we've got Harrison Merrill, seven, eight thousand, you got the village being re-talked about. You got a movie studio being talked about, and we constantly hear, hey, we never have enough money for roads. Well, sounds like a pretty good conversation to me.
It's absolutely worth discussing.
And I'll be honest with some of you. You know, the work sessions, it's a privilege that I show up at right now, work session. You are supposed to have that back and forth, Lori. You are. And I'll just leave it at that.
Well, you're lucky to come whenever you'd like to, I mean.
Like I said, it's a privilege that I show up at a work session.
Well, we're privileged to have you, Richie.
Conversation. You can't have conversation with three.
You know, Mr. Mayor, you have a lot of grandstanding, all you want, but it's not. It's just communication, that's all.
Yeah, what better place to have it, in front of the people where they pay their taxes?
Indeed. All right, so you know, that makes me want to, no, I'm going to stick with the meeting because
There you go.
The reality is that, yes.
This is a business meeting.
Anyway. We have meetings to talk about a lot of these things people don't show up to. So next item on the agenda is twenty-three dash oh oh five, which is the charter amendment for the districts. Rick, would you like to talk about that?
Sure. Mayor and Council, before you have an ordinance that will amend the charter of the, of the city. If adopted by the, by the council, this amendment is to redraw the, the council districts, the council boundaries between the districts. This is to comply with the federal constitution requirement of one person, one vote. As the council knows, about every ten years, the US government conducts through the Census Bureau, a census of the country and where do people live? And then once that information is obtained, then local governments and state governments have to redraw the boundaries of the various elected officials. So here we are with this. We've had a public meeting, a, a very informal public meeting. Also, this was on the council agenda last meeting. And it's before you for the second time to consecutive meetings. So it's ready for consideration and adoption if the council chooses. The new districts are the proposed districts do comply with the constitutional requirement to one person, one vote and also comply with the requirement of the nineteen sixty-five Civil Voting Rights Act. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-three dash oh oh five?
I make a motion, we adopt twenty-three dash oh oh five.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of adopting twenty-three dash oh five, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries unanimously. Next up are two new business items. One is twenty-three dash oh eight, which is an MOU with the Chetos Artist Co-op. Is that probably talking about that?
That's for here at the city hall, correct?
Or other expert besides Rick on the, the district. So he came here. Yeah, the MOU, this mayor council, the MOU is going to be with the, the community art group that's going to be, that's, that build out the, the hall or the room at the end of the hall. It's a great addition to, to City Hall. And we're going to have art programs and such, but very similar to the brick works MOU, they're occupying some space in City Hall. So that requires that relationship we have to have. Attorney drew it up for us. Make sure they have the proper insurance and understand that, you know, everything's going to be in place as far as patrons coming in and out. And, you know, we, we ensure the safety of, of those folks. So it's, it's standard MOU. We have to answer any questions you may have about that.
All right. Can I get a motion in a second to adopt twenty-three dash oh eight, please?
Make a motion, we adopt twenty-two dash oh eight.
It's twenty-three dash.
I'm sorry, twenty-three dash oh eight.
Twenty. It says twenty-two.
Yeah, it's in the book, twenty-two and on the, yeah, twenty-three.
I'm just looking at twenty-two.
A second. Any discussion about this? Any questions? Not all those in favor of adopting twenty-three dash oh eight, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries unanimously. Next up is the resolution adopting the Parks Commission members, as I mentioned at the work session. All of the current members are staying on. So that is Diana Wilson, Roland Dawson, Clifford Bizard, Pat Lesko, Chris Jones and Chip Denton. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-three dash oh one oh with those names?
Second.
A motion in a second. Any discussion? Again, I'll read the names. Diana Wilson, Roland Dawson, Clifford Bizard, Pat Lesko, Chris Jones and Chip Denton. All of whom do a ton of work in the parks, around the parks, for the parks and are greatly appreciated in their roles. So thanks for that. All those in favor of adopting those folks, reappointing them to the commission, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. That carries unanimously. Next up is mayor and council comments. And we'll start with Troy tonight.
Can I say something real quick before we start with Troy?
That's a good bit.
Um, I did, I did want to say, Mr. Lindsey, if we can have an executive session, I was sitting in that particular meeting. It was actually my meeting where that took place. Reason nothing was mentioned. Well, you know what? The individual that was offended. He went on about his day. Obviously there's some cats out the back and we do need to discuss that as a personnel matter.
We, we can't have it tonight, Richie, because it hasn't been advertised. It's not been up there. But we can have it next month if you want, wanted to be.
And, and let's have some meetings and research between now and then too, so that we come into that informed. Okay. All right. Good deal. Dana, you shot that for next time. All right, Troy.
Absolutely. Nothing to say at this point, Mayor.
Ruby?
I just want to say thanks to the staff and also Greg, want to say thanks again for all the fires. And especially, you know, with the fire in Serenby and also the fire that happened on Cascade Pametta Highway. The little guy, Justin Cambridge, three years old, which would alarm the family of that fire. And so I appreciate that. So hopefully maybe one day we can bring him in here and just celebrate him because he is, I did speak with Ms. Honor. And she said he always asks questions about like what happened. I try to memorize that fire. So just want to say thanks, everyone.
Lori? All right, I'm sorry, come here.
Yeah. You're fine. Um, I wanted to tell, so Steve Nygren mentioned earlier, I know you were thanking Chief Brett as well. And also to thank Steve because on Saturday and then Chief Brett came over to Serenby. And I know Steve switched out the topic to move it to fire safety. Because of what's been a couple of things that have gone on and there was a great feedback, Chief Brett. And they, what we were able to do was provide residents with a list of fire safety items that I think a lot of people were asking about and it was so timely to go ahead and do that. So thanks to Steve and thanks to Chief Brett for doing that.
Thanks, Richie. Yeah, first of all, Ms. Wilson, you and your team do an excellent job. Thank you so much. I know y'all worked tirelessly at that park. So, you know, my comments were just trying to keep the people that go there a little bit safer. And trying to keep vandalism up out of their song, you know? Especially because, you know, the comments I get aren't from the people with the Cab County tags. They're from the people that live in Chattahoochee Hills, you know? Anyway, um, I guess I'll, I'll just be brutally honest with some of you people. Some of you people know why I miss a meeting. Sometimes I'll let you know. A meeting, a workshop is supposed to be a discussion. In my opinion, they're not. To a certain extent, the last fourteen items I've brought up to be discussed or to change something to benefit the people have all been met with hush. Some of y'all have been here for some of those and I see the bewildered look on some of your faces. I get it. The difference is I know where some of you stand. Some of you understand what this community means to a lot of us. Some of you understand that you want to sell it out and build it. Me personally, my job is to represent the people that voted for me. My job is to tell you the truth the best as I know it. And I'm not the first guy that they call. But whether I know the information or not. Um, I will still give you the information that I know. And, um, I said this at the last meeting and I'll say it at every meeting until November. If you don't like the way things are going. Put somebody in these chairs that recognizes your way of life. Because whether you like it or not, you're at war right now, people. Your way of life is on the line. You got four or five major product projects in the works. You just saw two months ago, you just saw the zoning change to accommodate a movie studio that's not even here. You just saw last month, the TDR discussion. Where I had about nine different questions. And crickets. Everybody's got an agenda. I've told you what mine is since, since I got in this chair, what, twelve, thirteen years ago? You can repeat it back to me. I like to hunt and fish and I can't do that around concrete and steel. I don't need your money. I don't need anything from you. I need you to do what you've always done, taking care of your land. You preserved your land. Hill Country, we've done nothing to create this place. You people that have lived here for generations created this place. You need to be aware of people's agendas as you see it unfold right in front of your eyes. If you pay your taxes and you own your property, it's time for you to start standing up for what's yours. The original idea when we became a city was we may have three of these large developments. Seemed okay. Bootcart decided to build. If he had two thousand houses back there, you'd never know it. A lot of us have never been on his property. That would be great. I'd be all for that. Man owns eight thousand acres. Guess what? He's owned them since eighty-six, I think. He's one of us. He's preserved this area. But right now you're zoning, you could have ten or fifteen of these. And right now you got four or five permits waiting to be signed. Wait until some more people sell out. What amazes me is how quick people are to sell out, to be honest with you. Instead of standing up for what's theirs. That blows my mind. That does. Work hard all your life. But you're willing to move past grant bill, middle Alabama, check land prices there. They're not cheap. I buy and sell real estate everywhere. I know exactly what land's worth. But, um, anyway, Mr. Michael, I hear your concerns. I've been concerned for years about it and you've heard me talk to a lot of you about it. And now I see sometime, it looks like some people are starting to pay attention. I hope you do. And I hope, I can tell you this, I've had a few people contact me about running for some of these seats. And if you want to contact me, I'll tell you this, when you got the right people up here. And that's my opinion. Ladies, gentlemen, you don't like it, say if I care. When you got the right people up here, this takes about four hours a month. That's what it takes. And when you got the wrong people up here, I spend ninety percent of my time trying to find out what I should know. I've told people a million times, emailing me is a waste of time. I live in the same city you do. Call me. I can tell you the last time people called me, they didn't. I called them before the TDR ordinance to explain it to a lot of them. Didn't understand what they was looking at. Still voted for it. That was a six-month gap for me. Previous councils, we could have those conversations. I could call up people. You wouldn't see this dog and pony show up here. You just would not. Because we could work it out like adults. Fay Godwin, one of the best ones. We didn't agree eye to eye, but you know what? We could walk away and move on down the line. So, um, you know, I'll just leave it at that, guys. I'm going to fight for what's mine. I'm going to fight for my rights with my property. I'm going to fight to be able to do what I want to do with it. And there's not a soul up here that can stop me. I suggest you do the same. And that's all I got to say about.
Next.
Uh, yeah, I wanted to mention a couple of events coming up. There's a, we're we're trying to do something to offer some senior services here in Chattahoochee Hills. We've been working with Fulton County Senior Services for a while. While we're doing that, we're going to at least try to have some senior service luncheons to give some programming to seniors and kind of get some input from them to see what they would like. So we're, the first senior luncheon will be March seventeenth at eleven AM. Here in the city, in, in this room here. It's supported by a community outreach, community brickworks, Providence Baptist Church, Fulton County Senior Services. And a number of residents who are giving presentations and providing entertainment. We had a South Fulton Municipal Association meeting this last month. Where that's kind of a big deal is it's the neighboring cities in South Fulton that get together. And much good has happened from that. Chief Brett can, can tell you what happens when the cities get together and work and support each other. It was our turn to host the supper and part of that was a presentation with about an hour long presentation of data from the census, which was quite enlightening. But what I want to point out at that luncheon, at that supper was one, it was at Cherry, I always get it wrong. It's a Cherry Hollow Farm, Cherry Hollow Farm. Carter Williamson. So it was held at a local venue, which was really quite pleasant and it's very unusual. If you've never been there, it's kind of an awesome place. But it wasn't just hosted there. It was hosted by our city, our municipal staff. And I don't mean they just ordered the food and sat down and ate with the rest of us. Every single one of them were waiting on tables, meeting and greeting people, clearing plates. It was just an awesome kind of thing. And there was, the mayor was there, city manager and his staff and three council people. And I bring that up because, yes, this is an extra event, but it's a chance to show pride in our city and solidarity as leaders. That we want to work with the other cities around. And what we continue to have when we have these meetings is three people from the council there. And it's often said that the city runs on three. There's only three people that show up a good often time. I want to say something personal here. On the one hand, when people stand up and call the mayor a bully and refer to three council people as Stepford wives. I think that's kind of the pot calling the pedal black. If you don't think that's bullying. You've never even had conversation with the three council people up here. We may seem like we don't have a lot to say and we vote quite quickly. But we go to all of the work sessions. We're on vacations or in the hospital or in Belgium. We call in to the meetings and we participate. Not only with the, the additional meetings that are offered. But, you know, I've been accused of spending too much time at City Hall. Well, you're right. I do. I call Mike or Katie all the time. I ask Robbie or Chief Little or Greg for meetings because I want to understand. And it's not a four-hour-a-month job. I spend that much just in the morning working on newsletters to keep my district informed. And they say that my good deed goes unpunished. But it, it just goes a step further than that with some of this hate that's being pushed out there in the community for three council members that do the job, sort of shaming us for doing that. And I would challenge you, if you've got that attitude, if you've got that chip on your shoulder against us, how about giving us a fair chance in calling us? Ask to speak to a meeting. Ask us these questions you think you know the answers to. Because we've been to the meetings, we've done the research. I don't have to bring in someone expert. I could, but I have the answers. And if you don't want to talk to me, I've compiled those answers in a thirty-seven-page FAQ that I just shared with another resident yesterday. If you'll take the time to read, if they'll take the time to get to know us. We take, I'm just speaking for myself now. I take this zoning very seriously. I live in the rural district just like you do. And I'm very serious about representing this area. I guess what the people that own the large parcels have as much right to do what they want to under a zoning as you do. We don't get to pick and choose under our zoning. It's, it's lovely that Carl Bootcart has been footing the bill on his eight thousand acres for over twenty-five years and the same thing with Hennessy. We appreciate his park-like view. But he's ready to sell it and, and sell it and have it developed. We don't know how that's going to be yet and it is not a done deal. We haven't seen the application yet that's coming out of the DRI process. Nothing's a done deal until we see it and we have conversations and there'll be public input and public comment. And if you're of the mind that you've elected us to represent you, call us. And if you're not ready to talk to your council member anymore. Talk to another council member, but talk to someone that's at the table and comes to the meetings and that has stake in the game. Um, the last thing I want to leave you with was, so I've been here for twenty-five years. Been a part of a couple of processes for becoming a city. And preserving the land was just only a little part of that, honestly. And I do credit Steve Nygren for a lot of that. What you may forget was why we wanted to become a city was Fulton County was underserving us. I was taking three hours for ambulance service to get here. Some people's houses burned down, even though they were a half a mile from the fire department. And what's different now is we have a tremendous staff and, and I'm probably going on too much about it being a Pollyanna. But for me, it's made a big difference knowing that we have the staff to cover us. So yes, preservation is important. I don't want to downplay that. I just want to remind you that Fulton County Senior Service. I just want to remind you that Fulton County Senior Service, Fulton County Services was a big reason. We wanted to become our own city so we could have control of our destiny. That's all I have to say.
You know, one of the things um, we talked about a lot before we became a city. Was the fact that. The folks that live in what's now Milton wanted to keep the rural character of their place, the folks that lived in Alpharetta, the folks that lived in Roswell, the folks that lived in Coming. In Noonan, in all of the places around Atlanta, wanted to stay the way they were. And you see how that worked out in all of those places. We talked a lot about that at the time. And I went back just because I was curious to look at some of the materials that we were using, even when we were talking about that, when we were doing the research on whether we should become a city or not. Every single thing, the comp plan that more than half of the helms in this community participated in the first comp plan for the city. Every single thing that we've ever put out, talked about the fact that what we were trying to do was to save as much of the rural community as we could in the face of inevitable development. And in channeling that development as carefully as we could into only a small portion of the city. And that's exactly what's still happening, right? So that's a thing. And, and I mean, again, you can shake your head, but the fact is, that's all written in places, and I'm starting to put it out for people so that they can remember. One, two. The, the impacts that we're seeing right now, the reason that we all agree that we need more police officers. Is not because of impacts that are happening inside of Chattahoochee Hills. There are thirty million square feet of warehouses being built around us right now. That are at best ten percent full. Each one of those is going to put out seven hundred semis per day, going back and forth. There are developments up and down Tommy Lee Cook on every piece of land that one could possibly happen on. The eight thousand person, eight thousand home development that Richie mentioned is in the city of Palmetto. It projects into Chattahoochee Hills, but right into the middle of us, right all the way to Atlanta Noonan, crosses Atlanta Noonan. Eight thousand homes in the city of Palmetto. I mean, again, it doesn't take much time looking at the houses in Palmetto to recognize that that is going to have a huge impact here, right? The traffic that people complain about right now, people complain about traffic on South Fulton Parkway or on Campbellton Redwine, that ain't coming from Saranby, folks. That's coming from Kuwaita County. It's coming from Douglas County. It's coming from the places around us that are developing just like every other place in the Atlanta region has. Every other place in Atlanta has been totally covered up with subdivisions and strip malls. Right? And I get it, don't come to the meetings, don't do the research, don't ask the questions and get them answered. It's confusing. What we're doing is different. It's not what's normal. It's no question. But it is thoughtful, and it is, the work has been done by thoughtful people. And again, I challenge people all the time, please come talk about the specifics, right? I mean, I'm sure it's not perfect, nothing is. But the only hope of a different outcome here is what we're trying to do. And I, I, I tell you, I, I am perfectly happy with everybody being able to speak their mind, absolutely. But the disrespect to the three people that do come to all the meetings. With all the, you know, they meet with the developers that ask, they meet with everybody to try to learn as much as they can. For them to be shamed for that doesn't seem right to me. It just doesn't.
When you get ready to.
They are.
Comment on that, I will.
I don't.
People want their answers. Good at places, any given to them.
Save it for the town hall, maybe?
Well, no, no, but the, the point is, anyway. Anyway. What I'm saying is that these impacts are all coming regardless. They're already here. People driving through our town from city of South Fulton or Palmetto or whatever. Hitting a deer, dropping their guns behind so they don't get arrested, right? That's not Chattahoochee Hills people. I promise you, it's not people living in Saranby. That impact is here. It is all around us. City of South Fulton went from sixty thousand people to a hundred and ten thousand people in the last ten years. There are two million more people moving into the Atlanta region in the next twenty years, according to A R C. Where do you think they're going? They're not all filling in inside of two eighty-five, they're coming to neighborhoods like this. Right? So again, thoughtful planning around that is important. And, and I just don't think it's fair to say that because people are considering development that's coming in the context of our zoning, that they're doing something wrong. There is not. I appreciate people coming out. Again, I'm happy to talk to anybody too. But I, I don't think it's fair to, you know. The irony, right? When I see, it's all about the money. I mean. Yeah. Anyway, I appreciate you being here, I do. And uh, with that, I'm done too. And I'd like to motion a second to adjourn the regular meeting.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Second. Motion a second, all those in favor say aye. We stand adjourned. We do always have a town hall session at the end. I'm happy to do that again tonight. Uh, my only suggestion is that. Everybody. Remain as, as polite as they possibly can. And remember that the goal here is to, you know, get questions answered from staff and things like that, that you can't get answered otherwise. But whatever, whatever people have, if you have something. I am happy to do it. Yes, sir. The uh, the cell tower at the park, uh, we talked about that a little bit, Darrell.
Yep.
They were, they were out there working on it last week, right? So we're expecting that, you know, within six months to be fairly soon. I saw one over here. Yes, sir. So the way I usually characterize it when I'm talking about it, you know, we've talked, Richie mentioned the idea that there are going to be several villages along the parkway. The way that our zoning works is you have a certain number of development rights, once they're used up, they're used up. So there's a limit, there's a cap to the level of development. The bulk of that happens probably along the parkway in the context of some villages. Those villages are mixed-use villages, so yeah, they probably do have homes and restaurants and businesses and things like that in them. Uh, they're on somewhere over twenty-five percent of the land, somewhere between twenty-five and thirty percent, based on the physical constraints of who builds where. And the bulk of the rest of it is pretty much like it is right now. That's, that's what feels likely to me. Now, the timeline, if you'd have asked me that same question fifteen years ago, I'd have probably said the same thing. And fifteen years later, what we have is a bigger Saranby, right? So it depends a lot on the market and when the market happens. But there is so much more development happening around us right now that it feels much more imminent to me, right? So, you know, somewhere between fifteen and a hundred years from now, that's what I would think would be happening here.
Uh, next question, there is some property approximately, it sounds like it's about two hundred and six acres at Woodruff and Rivertown. Uh, that was circulating on uh, Chat Hills Rant and Rage. Is that uh, currently under contract or has it been sold out possibly for development?
Somebody asked me that question today. I have no idea. Uh, there, the city doesn't get like an update when somebody sells a property, right? The only time we hear about those things is either when a developer comes in to ask a question, like, I'm thinking about buying this land. Or if they bought some land and they're thinking about doing something, when they're saying, hey, I'd like to do this on that land. So I, I, somebody asked me about that one today. I don't, I don't know about that one.
Just my concern is, you know, and, and I'm, I'll be brief. You know, with all the development, like you, what you were saying is I, the, the crime starts to come inward. From, from other towns, and, and it's not us, it's the surrounding areas when all this development starts taking place. So I think that's where the great concern is.
I, I agree with you. And, and I know how you pay for that, right? You pay for more police officers with tax revenues. And again, from the very beginning of my involvement in this process, that was always a part of the conversation. We're going to protect as much of the community we can, in, in as, as close to its current state as we can. And we're going to encourage development on the rest to pay the taxes that we need to provide the services that are going to be needed, even if nothing happens here at all. Because of what's happening all around us, right? So there, there's no question. I, I am also worried about that impact. And, and you know, frankly, the, the development patterns on the south side are something that nobody on the north side would ever accept. You don't see thirty million square feet of warehouses in Alpharetta, right? So again, you think about what the development pressures are here, they're not necessarily the best pressures. And what we're doing in Chattahoochee Hills, you can see it by just driving around. What it does seem to promote is something that is higher quality and higher value, right? It, it, it feels virtuous to me compared to what the, of, other opportunities might be.
You say what happens.
I mean, I'm going to dig into that, yes, for sure. I've heard what you said, and I'm going to follow up on that. I, I hear what you say.
Okay, I have a really quick, couple of quick questions. Who maintains our wayfinder signs?
Uh, the wayfinding signs would be maintained by the, by the public work staff. I think.
Only because I was coming down Sardis Church Road the other day, and the letters are actually coming off of the sign.
We saw that on one of them too, and we've talked to the vendor. The vendor's going to fix that. I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, that was one. Um, the second thing was that um, a citizen had a concern about the ha- hand dryers at the park. Are they own off? Because they said, I know we're trying to save money and not have a lot of trash with the papers. Paper towels. Right, that's right. Look, I couldn't fit it all in three minutes, so I'm talking now.
Yeah, well, that's, that's another thing too, you know, that, that.
Paper. No, there's no pa- there's no paper towels. And we don't need that.
Dineen too, I, I wanted to also say something about, something that was talked about before. Something like that, the right answer really is to call City Hall, right? That's the way that message gets there, or if something's broken or whatever. That's not a call nine-one-one thing. But you see illegal activity in the park. Or you see somebody spray painting something or whatever, that's a nine-one-one call. And, and please, everybody hear that, right? We, we, we get this thing so often where we find out a bit, things in one of two ways. One is, the officers come back into the office on Monday morning, and somebody called City Hall, left a message for somebody saying, hey, this thing's happening at my house. Didn't call nine-one-one, didn't get the message to the officers on duty. The other is on Facebook, you know, this thing just happened, ah, like, please call nine-one-one, right? Please call nine-one-one. Sorry, go ahead.
No, so my next question with Chief Little, so. I live right down the road from where that truck is parking in the right of way. And I know that South Fulton crosses over, the city of South Fulton crosses over just past that creek, that bridge, right? This truck is parking at the corner of Brazel Road and Cochrane Mill. That's not ours? Where does, where does South Fulton Park, uh, what? Right. Right.
It's, it's confusing, it's, it's, you'd never lay it out that way.
I see those little signs, and I understand where those are at, but that one doesn't look like it's on that. So it's just past Brazel Road going down? Because.
I, I, look, again, just to make sure, let's have somebody check again, but if, if it's the one that everybody's thinking about, it's in South Fulton.
Okay, yeah, because it's parking next to the fire hydrant and everything, right? I know. It's dangerous, it really is. If a deer jumps out, you're done. All right, um, that's all I have for me.
Up here in the front. Front corner.
Thank you. Um, just. Chief Little, could, could you call South Fulton and just tell them about it? Just, I mean. Okay, as long, as long as you, I mean, it just seems.
No, no, they're, they're working with South Fulton, we just can't make them do it.
Make it theirs.
Yeah.
Okay, and then just secondly, is the uh, I heard it could be a property tax reduction um, by the governor, is that going to affect Chat Hills? Uh, budget coming up, are you taking that into account?
We are just working on the budget stuff now, and that's one of the things that we're looking at, yes.
Okay. And just.
There's a couple bills actually that might affect this that we're watching, but yeah, that, that's.
All right, and just process-wise, but when, when you take comments at the public uh, session up front. And perhaps it involves something that you need to look at and come back, is, does it always circle back to a council meeting because they were taken as a public forum upfront?
It depends on the nature of the comment, right? If it's something that is like the, the truck thing, right? We would talk about it a lot of times in the meeting itself right then. Usually not right at the end of public comment, a lot of times in this part, or in the uh, the mayor council comments, you see us taking notes up here.
All right. I mean, one thing that was taken, it was kind of an allegation against one of the.
Yeah, and we're going to have an executive session.
Section with that ever feedback about how that resolved?
Yes. Yes.
And lastly, the, the. The, the incident that happened where we had Hutchinson Ferry, were, were there any felonies or anything or, or that uh, were involved in Chat Hills? Or did we make any charges against any individuals?
Which, which one, because there are two.
Um, the two guns found and.
Started as a result of an accident, car hit a deer. Disabled the car, so yeah, no reason. Yeah, there's nothing indicated that came here. That, right, the passenger. Driver was the defendant's session firearm, so we have a bigger one for that. Also been charged with uh, assault, endangerment, murder, not giving necessary information, and for criminal trespass.
Did we link to guns, or one of the guns?
One of your guns, yes.
So isn't that another felony that you're. But, but he's leaving it too, and, and were there drugs found? No drugs found? So that's.
And the guy in the previous thing is in custody somewhere else. Anything else? Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, Becky, I'm sorry.
Back to Richie's point about the park. I think the crowds that I see, because I pass it every day. Um, it's a lot of people, and I think that's bringing in crime too, because people go and then they're like, hey, let's look what else is around here. So to Richie's point, if we had somebody that could. Protect the park or. You know, call the chief or whatever. But I think a lot of times when you open things like that, it is very popular. But you know, the school has brought more people to the park because they've discovered it, their kids go, you're in school, and they tell their parents about it. It brings more people in. I feel like. Protection than just a teenager, that's my point, because I live there too. And I know that we see cars come up, pass, go back, me, all day, but I never see a car. I used to see them all the time, but I never see one. And so we just don't feel that safe over there. With all the stuff that's going on and that.
He also has a security to track the contact.
He also has a radio to contact the contact. I was in the park for two and a half hours yesterday. I was injured today by officers patrol through there. We are around.
And and.
We're there. Yesterday I was upwind on fire, but I was in the park all of the yellow and red trail for two and a half hours. And so we're there and normally you wouldn't be able to patrol that far back in.
That's a good thing. And and right, so if you look at cities around us and do a number of police officers per unit of population. We actually have more police officers per population than most places around us, but that, hang on a second, let me finish my thought, okay? Because the reality is we're also huge, right? We're three, four, five, six, ten times the size of those towns. We need more police officers to cover this place effectively. We know that, we talk about that. And they cost a lot of money, right? I mean, because you can't just send one random guy out. You have to have people to back each other up and all of that, right? Like, you know, it would be great to be able to have north of Parkway, south of Parkway patrol on all the time. It would be great. And that just takes money, so we we agree. We have one down here.
My question to you, Laurie, is do you own land in this city?
I do.
Great amount or?
Five acres, that's a great amount to me.
Well, see, my family had sixty at one time, and now we're down to thirty seven. So when somebody votes my rights out without talking to me, you know what? You can walk out here, talk to me just like I can say to you that. And I can see only two people usually here. The mayor last time actually came out and spoke to me because he actually called me out. That's exactly what you did. And then I see Troy and Richie come out. So I mean, you know, that works both ways, but when you take and just vote something in and you don't have any skin in the game, that kind of makes me mad. Because I mean, you take the rights, I have to sell my land any way I want to, and you're you're not even involved with five acres. So if you have thirty seven like what we have and you try to sell it and you say, hey, you can do it this way or you can do it that way, but you can't do it the way you want it. Would that not make you mad?
Herein lies the fundamental problem with zoning.
Was that a question for Lori?
I'm sorry, yeah, no.
And I I know, I I get it.
One of the, just, I mean, can I make a comment? Would that make me mad if someone told me what I can do with my five acres? Well, since the city formed, someone told me what I can do with my five acres. When I moved out here, Fulton County told me what I could do with my five acres. I don't know, there's a place you can go where they're not gonna tell you what you can do with your five acres.
Cause I mean, all the stuff that was in play in Fulton County before this city came into fruition is being changed now. That's what I'm trying to tell you and you're just not listening to. But I mean, they're not telling you right now what you can do with your five acres.
I think um, what I'd like to do is schedule a time and talk with you so I can understand your concern a little better.
Can I say this real quick, guys? Let me say this real quick.
Well, I'd like to have a conversation with them and and kind of step through. And I don't, but he didn't tell me why it's gone from sixty acres to thirty seven.
Let me tell you what the people are seeing, okay? And this is maybe something somebody could answer for me as a citizen. Why in the world would you take zoning and change it? When a movie studio or regardless of what it is, it's not even permitted. What you did is you changed the zoning to fit something that's not even here. So when somebody says it looks like a done deal, you don't have to be a genius to think that, okay? That's what I'm trying to get through to your people's heads. People have an agenda. Wake up and look at how they do what they do. The question Mr. McReith asked was if you had thirty seven acres and somebody came out the blue and told you what to do with it. Would you be pissed off? Didn't ask you if you had five acres. He said, look at his situation.
So if you had sixteen hundred acres and somebody told you what you could or couldn't do on it, would you be pissed off, Richie? Because here's the fundamental.
Question.
Here's the fundamental. Here's the fundamental.
You want me to answer that?
Please. So the point is, nobody wants rules on their own land. That's a fact. This is the fundamental issue with zoning. Nobody wants rules on their own land, but they absolutely want to control what happens next to them, right? And that is why this job is so hard, because you can't make anybody happy, right? And you better come in and do the homework and understand the ups and downs of all of this stuff. And come to the meetings where we do cop plans and have the will of the community expressed. And then try to figure out how best to do for the community what they've asked for in the face of the fact that nobody wants any rules on their own property. Right? It is.
Well, I apologize, Mr. Mayor. I I do apologize, Mr. Mayor, but I will say this, and I've said this before. There are two styles of living out here. Whether you live in a village or hamlet and you sign your fifty page rules, those are your rules. When we became a city, it was to protect our way of life and our landscape. It wasn't to hem us into a corner with all these rules. As far as I'm concerned, as long as you're not making a nuclear missile or or meth in your barn, it's your house. It's your property, okay? Who's who's gonna tell you, oh, you got fifty acres, you're you're one house per twenty acres? Oh, my gosh, that sounds insane. It is insane. Some of us get it. And that's a fair question. Or sell it to a developer because he's the only guy in town that'll come and buy it and he's not gonna give you top dollar. That's my only point, folks, okay? Sorry.
How many were here thirty years ago? Do you remember what was going on? Well, but if you remember, I mean, we we have been out here ten years. We come out here to develop. Remember when they tore down the forest on the west side of Palmetto that we used to drive through to get to twenty nine? And there was a bunch of houses going in. And then one of the same developers bought the hundred acres on Hutchinson Ferry Road. And developers were starting to look at this cheap land because we had no services and no education. It was gonna be cheap houses. And I first started trying to buy more land to protect us. Because if that happened, I knew not only were we gonna lose the quality of life, but the value of our land. And you look at everywhere throughout metropolitan Atlanta, that's what's happened. And as you look at all those, it's the people with fifty acres. When the subdivision, when all that happens, they get run over. Now you could sell it, but you don't keep your quality of life. You can't stay on the home place. I grew up outside Denver and I saw it happen. My home place is all gone. Nobody had a chance once every once it started happening. And that's happened in every place. And we started looking at the preservation people to help us save this and they were all in front of the bulldozers on the other end of town. And we we weren't getting any service. Laurie said it. How long did it take to get, you know, anything? Because the taxes here could not service the area. It's why Calweda turned us down when we had an option to go to Calweda. They looked at what it was costing Fulton County to serve these forty acres, a thousand acres, and they turned us down. And that's where we came up with this whole idea of creating an overlay. Now Carl Bootcard and the Minerva's and everybody with a hundred and fifty acres or more, we're all planning to develop at some point. And when we got them to agree to this idea of saving seventy percent of the land, that's unheard of in this nation. There is no place that has that idea and it was the people who were gonna profit most. Carl Bootcard had already given DOT the rights to take a place for his future big boxes on the future South Fulton Parkway. In the afternoon, Carl agreed that we would try this because it would protect the area and protect our own values. That was a huge day. We put the overlay in and we realized that we, as a community, didn't want to rely on changing elected people at Fulton County. And we petitioned the state legislature to become our own city. And I could project what Serenbe had started to do, we broke down in two thousand and four, on what our tax bases could be. And that we could help support a city on our own because the taxes coming in could not do it. Thank goodness for people that believed we could do it. They voted to allow us to have our own charter. And I have continued to invest. And during the recession, almost lost everything, trying to save this land. And today, Serenby represents sixty percent of the tax base that allows us to have a full-time fire, a full-time police. And we could not exist. And yet people are always talking about the problems with Seren. We're not the problem, we're the only way to save. We tried bringing in anyone who's remember several of you, fifteen thousand acres in Calweda that was part of the hill pit. They elected not to come into this overlay. Some of those landowners have said, I wished I'd understood what you were saying. Because what's happened to all the land along Tommy Lico? They have education. We didn't have education. We would have been a lot more worse. It'd be what South Fulton and Palmetto has. The only way we're going to save seventy percent of this land is if thirty percent does get developed in case taxes. We were looking at the research, the only place that's come close to saving this amount of land is Lexington, Kentucky. They have saved twenty thousand acres, twenty eight thousand acres. With our seventy percent, if we save it, it's twenty eight thousand. It's cost them ninety seven million dollars to do that. It's cost us as zoning regulation. So I think we have to look at the bigger picture. There's no way you can stop this area and if we don't have some development. You know, this area is not gonna be able to support us. Serenby alone can't continue to support everything. Or it could, but if we want a lot of the other things, we're gonna have to have other development. So I just think, you know, you gotta look at the whole picture. And, you know, many times that, you know, I hear Serenbe beat up and all the traffic, what have you, I very rarely hear depreciation. The wayfinding taxes, signs were all paid by the hotel motel tax that came primarily from uh, the inn at Seren. We have never asked for a thing from Serenby. There's no city money in the spawn except a crosswalk paid by the hotel motel tax across Atlanta Noonan Road. So I think just the clarity, we have to look at both sides. Thank you.
Point back coming back there and mark here.
I'm just wondering. And when. Able to get like spiders into Chat Hills and come across lines. Think that's Chat Hills. And then when we look at it on the map, no, there's a danger coming here, Latinian Road and that's.
Back back when, uh, before the city of Chattahoochee Hills and the city of South Fulton formed. That was just open, unincorporated land in Fulton County, so anybody could annex anywhere, right? And you see, for example, a lot of the warehouses on the Parkway are in land that's actually Union City, even though you think you're driving through the city of South Fulton. Because they annexed a lot of those corners. Uh, and the the annexation by Palmetto was the same sort of thing. The developer that owned that land, uh, not a not a bad idea, frankly, if you're a developer. Uh, wanted to take advantage of the brand we were creating here, this preservation and all that, without having to follow our rules. Right? The tragedy is it connects to, you know, Carlton Road and and it's it's not, again, to the to Steve's point. It does. And if you've seen the drawings, the houses come pretty much right up to the edge too, you know?
Steve, could you address the concern um, from early on? You know, with the planning commission and why uh, residents just weren't allowed to stay under the Fulton County zoning where it was just you needed three acres on a gravel road to build a house, one acre on a paved. Why and how did that change?
The, if you, this was a lot of research. People forget the Woodruff Foundation gave us two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, a group of five landowners, Bootcard, Tennessee, migrants, Minerva. We matched that because that was the only way we could get it. So this wasn't done by a group of people wondering what they wanted. We did a lot of research. Uh, University of Georgia Land Department and Legal Department were key in helping us do that. Um, and it showed that, I mean, you you had to have rules. You either had to have a plan where development happened on larger pieces and it was all clustered and save larger areas. Because you couldn't ask the people that had two hundred acres or more to save seventy percent. When everything across the way could be divided up in traditional developments, whether it was five acres divided into five houses or thirty into thirty. But what it was set up is anyone, I I forget what the minimum hamlet is, but you don't have to own it all. If a group of neighbors want to come together and do a master plan to cluster development on their land and save seventy percent, that that was available to any group of 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 landowners that wanted to do it. And as as University of Georgia pointed out, you you know, you you have to have it in one stand that goes. And so this is, you had to have that clustered zoning. Uh, the own, you know, there's really hardly any place that that does that. The countryside of England had those rules. University of Georgia studied that and tried to emulate some of those things to get the end effect. You look at various places, tried things. Milton had a complete different idea and you go to Milton today and see what's happening with it. More allows what we're talking about, you could roll back to. And it's sprawl, it costs you a lot more roads. A lot of research that this worked, it's not common and and, you know, we're into the early. You know, I wish there had been a lot more. If the recession hadn't happened, I think we'd have seen a lot more responsible balanced development. That that happened and it really stopped a lot of positive things that were gonna happen.
There's a, there's a couple other pieces to that too, right? The first cop plan that we did right when the city was formed. Talked about all those things in great detail with, again, a huge segment of the population, much, much more so than any cop plan I've ever seen. We're victims of our own success.
Hey, Steve, I'm I'm gonna ask you a question. Um, there's no doubt what you've done is good, okay? And see, I I think you've proven the point of the original zoning when the when the idea here was that maybe we'd have two or three of these developments. Cause currently we're three million to the good. We know um, some of our staff are some of the highest paid in the state, some of our department leaders. And as you continue to build, if we had another development like that. And as you continue to build, if we had another development like that, I could, I could say, well, you know, a ten, twelve million dollar amount surplus, that sounds pretty good for a city that where the majority of the people don't want to live in a hamlet. They just don't. So when you talk about seventy percent, and I get that, that's important. But telling me I can build one house on twenty acres, that's preserving, what is that, a hundred and ninety percent? Ninety-seven percent? Ninety percent of my land has to be preserved. You know, so that's where the problem is stemming from, of the majority of the community I talked to. Because I think you have proven exactly that we don't need five or ten of these things. I think with the tax base, we've proven that, you know what, we're going to be able to pave our roads. It doesn't look like it's going to be a thirty-year project. Looks like it might be a seven, eight, nine-year project. That's why I asked Robbie about the lost money. I mean, my goodness, this went from four thirty, we're projecting seven fifty based upon our values. So it, it seems like to me that, you know, if we only had one more of these, the, the people, I just don't feel that the people need the, the amount of rules that we have. The money is, is there. Money is already there.
So one of the big things, part of the reason Serenby's values are what we've done. But also, there's a sense that the rural roads leading to Serenby will be protected. Should every five acres along Hutcheson Ferry Road or Rico be divided into houses like you see in South Fulton or on the edge of Palmetto, none of us would hold the values.
If you had one house per five acres, you would preserve eighty percent. Is that correct?
It should be, when we talked, talked about this twenty years ago, it was a value proposition, not a development proposition. The reason Carl Buchardt agreed was he felt he could get more value by developing thirty percent than the hundred percent. Basic, simple way is to look at the values of golf course lots that bankers loved in the eighties and nineties. It turns out, according to the studies done by the Urban Land Institute, that ninety-two percent of the people buying those played golf twice or less a year. So it meant they were buying it for the overspend. The whole concept of this is to give them value of golf course lots without the money to put them in or maintain. And you, there are studies that your one house on twenty acres may be more valuable than twenty acres divided into twenty-one acre lots.
And Steve, I don't agree with that. What I'm doing is giving you a math problem.
A lot of studies that show that. So if you're talking about value, we are maintaining your value by saving our open roads. If one person's allowed to put five houses on thirty acres, why isn't everybody on that road? And there goes the neighborhood.
And then it's all Carlton Road and everybody's values are lower.
What that turns into is Riperton Road. And everybody's values are going up.
They're growing up because people don't think it's going to change. The, the other thing, I just want to, just to put a point on the budget issue, you know, we're, we're getting ready to pave a bunch of roads because we've been saving up reserve for a couple of years, because you get better prices when you do a bunch at once. The idea that we've got a three million dollar surplus, as if every year we're written three billion in the bank is just not true. It's not, it's not even close to true. We're fifteen years into the city, you can see the shape of the roads, right? You can see when you hear people talk about police and things like that, where we would be able to spend money that people would be happy to have a spend. So the idea that we've already got this solved just isn't true. Again, I agree, Serenby has done an, an incredible service to the city in kicking out the amount of taxes it does. We couldn't exist without it. And we're far from being done.
Steve, you know, can I say, I just want to say something to Steve Nyager. I, I do appreciate what Serenby has done. I've made that very, I've been vocal about that through the last few years. I really do, I appreciate some of the vision. We don't always agree. I try my best to be a very civil person as much as I can. One of my best friends years ago said, Troy, said, you know, there's some great things happening in this city. A guy named Rocky Reeves, who was an extremely good friend of mine. I love Mr. Rocky. He did a lot of good things for me. And one of the things that he brought up was that, you know, what's happening and overall what's happening here. And I think he summed it up pretty good, pretty well. He said, the mechanisms that are in play right now, a lot of what we are becoming is a lot of the large landowners are losing their rights, which I agree with him on that. And we're becoming nothing more than scenery to stand up and say, hey, we're, we're beautiful out here. And, and a lot of our rights are being eroded, you know, in order to stand up overall property values. I get that. And herein lies the rub and, and how we approach everything. You've got collectivism versus individual rights. I get it. I understand the overall forty thousand foot view, and I think most people here do also. But these people are very concerned, you know this, I don't have to give you this overview, about losing their ability to share in the property values and being able to cash in on that. And, and, and I'm not by no means telling you anything you don't know. But, and I believe that's the consensus that we have here. So as far as where we go from here, not sure. Not sure, and I, I think this is a great conversation we're having here now. But I don't believe it should be to the detriment of, to the extreme of, of, you know, one per twenty acres, et cetera. There's got to be something else. And that's their concern, that's their concern. And, and I hope I did not frame out anything you said in a wrong way. I do respect you, sir. So, thank you.
Thank you, and you've always understood the economics of it.
Sure.
And, and whether it's one house for twenty, if that's right or not, it's the general concept. And this is why the, you know, everyone who showed up to meetings, and we kept records of everyone on that showed up at a coffee or public meeting, we had a hundred percent support. And that was eighty percent of the landowners that showed up and understood it.
Sure.
Because there were two things we looked at that was important. One was our quality of life and keeping it cool, and the other was land values.
Right.
And that's generally the two groups that fight because there's opposing ways of zoning. We figured out how to bring that forward to, it should be property value we're looking at, not, you know, this idea that the best way to develop it, the highest value is to develop it. We're trying to change that, you know, high value is to save it. And if you have a house on, on twenty acres and you want to sell it, there's a lot of people that we're attracting to this area, even outside of Georgia. But that's a high value, and that's happened. People in our community that have wanted to sell have gotten a higher price than they would have because of Serenby. And just look at the values in South Fulton for twenty acres. That can be done however they want to. It's very different.
Absolutely.
Have to remember what really is value and, and understand that our country lifestyle is valued. And that means we have, we have to have rules to save the country.
Right, right, absolutely. And I believe to the landowners I was speaking about are those that not necessarily in, in Rocky's category of several thousand acres, you know, several, several thousand acres. But, but more of the fifty to seventy acre type. And, and that seems to be a lot of the consternation here.
Thank you. I'm a big landowner. I have eight point six acres, just so you know. And I've only been here three years, but I bought my property from, who once did have a lot of land, the Alfreds. And they were here generational grandparents, wonderful people, and I was blessed to be able to speak, have good conversations before and after I bought the property about, they wanted to know what I, what, what were my plans on Old Rico? And I know it's Rico, but I call it Rico. So on Old Rico, and it was to leave it, just build a place for me to live and leave it just the way it is. And I benefited from, my properties benefited from Serenby, okay? And, and I, I actually, I don't mind Serenby at all. I don't know why there's a, I haven't been here long enough maybe to see, but Serenby is its own little piece of beauty in its spot. And Serenby doesn't have a lot of riffraff coming in. They, the, the restaurants and the shopping, the things that they have, they don't attract the riffraff and the crunch. That's why I'm worried about the studio. You're, you're gonna have lower paying jobs, you're gonna have people coming and going. They can't afford to live in Serenby, which is, is fine, but when they're coming and going, they don't care. Like people that live in Serenby or people that are rural and want to protect their property. So I think that's my biggest thing. Is, i- if there was another Serenby going in, in another, I, I would actually be okay with that because they care. And it's, again, our nicer restaurants, little shops and stuff like that, things like that. I would not be opposed to that at all, but a mini California or a mini trillet or a huge trillet, I don't, I'm not interested in having trillets in the backyard, but in another Serenby, I'd be okay with that. So that's, I just didn't want to knock it. Like I said, I'm benefiting, my property values are benefiting because I'm a mile from it. So thank you for that. But I'm not selling, so.
Sarah, if you can, if you can hear me, nod your head twice. We're trying to get, if you can hear us, Sarah. I, I mute.
Anybody else?
Is the community of Serenby, Mr. Steve, is that considered a hamlet by yourself? My original thought when I attended the couple of meetings that I went to, that it was supposed to be like a, a road into an area that had your grocery store, your drugstore, your gas stations, your dry cleaners. Once you got from your work, you didn't have to leave and go out and see your needs for the week or whatever. Is that present in Serenby at this point?
It is, and, and our civil engineers have done a traffic study that we just got. And there's it's a number of trips in the mouth of house. Now, this, I, I found, doesn't mean people in your household drive. It's the average, that these contractors at UPS, it's a number of trips they make. Metro Atlanta, that's eleven trips per house. That means the people living there aren't really driving in that. And those four are mostly people coming in to work for the day and leave. I, I, I think so.
Yes. Folks, thank you very much for coming out. Sorry, was there one more? Did we find Sarah? Did Sarah get unmuted?
Sarah's ready to roll.
I do.
That was, that was him imitating.
I just, I'll just second that, you know, when, when we moved here, we moved for pure land. And, and we got pure land and we ended up building on about twenty acres. So I understand that we're clipped, but we also had a kind of a little dream to be able to maybe split up and have one of my kids build on it. So that's been clipped, and I, I can understand that. I was, I was hoping we were going to come into some sort of a five to ten acre minimum lot restriction. Understand it's twenty now, but, so, so there's a lot of people here that don't have any choice. And I think that's what the frustration you're hearing. I think that our success as Chat Hills occurred when we made Chat Hills. And, and I think Serenby and, and a lot of the folks involved in that, that, that was our success. And we went through a little up and down with the budget, and we were overspending as a city early on. We corrected that. And to, to my view, it's, we're in pretty good balance right now. And I, and I do hear this constant, we need more development. We need more development. We have to fill out that thirty percent or we're going to fail. And, and I just don't see the evidence of that. And I think, I think what you're hearing is, we want to know, are we in balance as a city or not? It appears when, when we give the budget reports, we are. But on the growth push, it, it appears we're not. I just, I just am a little bit confused on where we are and what our goals are from here out. I understand a lot was done before, but again, our success was when we became a city and we took control of that seventy. There are multiple places out in the, in the nation that have the same kind of success, same kind of comment. Or Davidson, North Carolina, they're at sixty-six, sixty-five percent green space. There's other communities have done it. And, and, and it's where they go after they do this is what we're talking about. And I think, I think this forum was well-spent time trying to get everybody aligned with, with what the council's view is, with what Serenby's view is, and what the majority of the populace in this community want. And so I applaud y'all for, for being open and cordial in trying to make that a, a common understand. But I think Richie's right, there, everybody has a different agenda. I have a different agenda. I'm not out to get rich on my land. I'm out to keep it. I'm out to stay here forever. So, but I understand I can't split off and give it to one of my kids
You can.
to build a house.
You can.
Doesn't sound like it. How can I do that, Lori?
No, the, the family split came out because the reality is, right, we talked about this, the commit, the the family split came out of the zoning in the last go around, because the only people that were actually doing it were developers. People were buying parcels of thirty-five, forty acres.
We just took out the family park, and that, that what you're saying?
So Tom, I understood that.
I didn't mean to interrupt, I'm just asking.
We, we could, under the family lot, we could split.
Oh, the family lot, no, I'm sorry, the family lot thing is still there for, yes. So, yes, I'm sorry. The family lot just for family, but you can't sell it to someone else and all that, which is not what people are talking about, right?
But you, you're saying
I get, yes.
You wanted to split for your family. You can do that. You can split off three acres for your family member. They have to hold on to it for at least two years.
Right.
Right.
Because the way that was working before, when you weren't making people hold it for the family, was that people were just using it as a development tool to subdivide smaller lots.
So how, how does that affect the twenty I'm here?
You get two cuts.
You get, yeah, two cuts.
But only to family.
You're welcome.
So before we became a city, we were not getting benefits from Fulton County. So what is Fulton County providing to us today now that we are a city? Because I know we have our own fire, we have our own police. What are they providing for us?
Back then, there was an SSD, right? That SSD provided local services. That's what funded the fire station here that had two officers in it that weren't paramedics or EMTs. That was what funded the one police officer that sometimes came through, right? We had to wait four or five hours to get him to visit. When we became a city, we got that money, that part of the money. The other part of the Fulton County money, which you've always been paying for, is for things like courts and the tax assessor's office and all that other stuff. And that's what we're still paying for. That's the Fulton County money. And then there's the Fulton County Schools money, which we're also always been paying for. And that's what we're still paying for. That's the Fulton County money. And then there's the Fulton County schools money, which we're also always been paying for, always have. So it's only the piece of it that the city got that changed. And yeah, for that. We are getting a heck of a lot more than we were getting from Fulton County for that piece of it, right? I mean, I get to, like, you don't, that huge chunk that they take to pay for courts and all that. You don't use the court system. You don't feel like you're getting much for that, but that's just something that everybody in Fulton County pays for.
I, thank you. I just wanted clarification of what changed.
Still no Sarah. Sarah, what do you want?
I think we lost Sarah.
I understand from the sounds, the park has been discovered by riffraff. It will only grow from there. Do we have any means of taking the monies that we have on Splotch or whatever? To install observance cameras because of the one little road coming out of Cochran Mill and then you can turn it to the park. It could be mounted there somewhere.
We, we have cameras there. We do. It's, it's, it's funny too, because I was talking to the guy who used to be responsible for the parks for Fulton County. And he was saying that they had the same problems back then. You know, the reality is every now and then, some. Some miscreant finds the park and it's just a fact. I mean, you know, when we first moved here and I asked about that part, people said, oh, nobody goes down there because it's only kids drinking beer and smoking pot. That's all it was back then. You know, it's, it's.
Stayed Carol.
And, and more police would help with that problem. All right.
Georgia Tech football.
Thank you guys very much. We will see you next month.